This conference will now be recorded.
Okay. Well, it worked once, twice. Oh, there we go. Sorry about that. There we go. So this is just some diagrams of the approach. What I'm going to show is the approaches, the middle span and such. How the bridge looks from a typical, you know, this is a south approach. How the piers are set, distances, and the type of supports they have.
Can you, can we go back? Sure. So that south approach is coming from Main Street over the bridge, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be the north approach because you're headed north. It's the opposite of what you think. So you're headed, this is the south.
I'm coming from Pettus Street to Main Street then.
Correct. That is correct. Yes. Sorry about that. There's a main span, and then there's a north approach. Again, nothing, all I get is just to show you how the bridge is constructed and distances between piers. And this is a general view of the bridge. Nothing exciting, but just, I know everybody else knows it real well. I don't, so it's good for me. So there's a couple of options that we can talk about. Actually, I'm going to pull that back a little bit. So there's short-term, immediate options that we can talk about. There's midterm options, and then there's a long look at this whole bridge structure. The short-term options, I'm going to just kind of list them out, is the do-nothing option. There's always that option. You just don't do anything. You just leave it closed. I put that out there because that's always has to be considered. The next option would be to basically put the traffic going northbound. What you would do is close off the west, or the west side of the bridge so that all the traffic is basically from the center support headed on the east side of the bridge. That's the least expensive. Probably, you know, we're looking at about $5,000 worth of work to do that.
How fast can we do it?
How fast?
Yeah.
It would probably be within a couple of weeks once approval was given. Again, depends on when, you know, how fast we can get the material to do it, putting up signs, and that. It's just an estimate of, you know, how fast we can get it done, depending on other things and material, obtaining the material. So again, that's option 1A that I'm calling. And it would be strictly only northbound only, no southbound at all. Questions, concerns, comments?
What would the weight limit be?
The existing weight limit. And both, well, I don't.
Which is 35 ton, right?
I believe so. I don't have that in mind.
That's what the bridge is marked, 35 ton.
Okay. The fire trucks that, the only one that can't go over it is the ladder truck, but that's because of the height of the bridge itself. So both vehicles, I've talked to the fire department, and both vehicles that are, would respond, is my understanding they would be able to meet the, they meet the weight limit. They'd be satisfactory to go over it.
Okay. Now, my, my question on this, Chris, this is just a kind of a temporary fix to get it back open. And we're, I mean, then, then we can decide to fix it properly on down the line?
Yes. So this doesn't do anything but open it for one-way traffic northbound. Doesn't solve any of the structural problems with it. Doesn't improve it at all or anything like that. Okay? So that's what the configuration would look like. What you can kind of see is we'd make it wide enough, 11 feet with, that shows kind of what we call is a Jersey barrier down the center. Not necessarily what we would use, but we would prevent both vehicle traffic and pedestrians from using the west side of the bridge. Option 1B is again to, what we would do is basically provide traffic both northbound and southbound. We would install a temporary signal traffic control. We would leave it green so that northbound is, is always headed, has a green light unless there's somebody headed southbound. Then the traffic light would turn red, and then the, the southbound traffic could go.
So this option would be, would allow traffic to go both ways instead of just one way?
At a time.
At the S1 at a time.
Right, yeah. So I mean, I just want to make that clear. So it's still a one-way bridge headed north, or I guess it's north and south. But general flow is always going to be allowed to go north. They're always going to be priority unless there's a call for somebody headed southbound. Again, signage, able to get the material. Once we do have all the material, probably approximately three weeks to get it all installed. Any questions on that one? Okay? Oops. Now what did I do? Oh, there we go. So those are all your short-term options. So, you know, do nothing, just put temporary barrier up northbound only. Third option is to put a traffic signal up to allow you to go with traffic both directions one way at a time. Option two is to encase what we call the fence. So if we go back, I'm going to go back to this picture here. So all the supports that you see underneath the ramps, those are called bends. And what we would do is encase those in concrete and install a signal for traffic control. Oh, I'm sorry, the wrong one. There we go. Sorry about that. Case them in concrete. Engineering is about nine months to design that. Cost of engineering is roughly 50,000 to 75,000, and estimated construction cost is about 30,000. So you're probably looking at somewhere between, you know, 18 months to two years to get this done. That's a midterm option. It's kind of a midterm, long-term. It'll fix the issues with the steel supports. You'll still, the city would still have to do maintenance on those supports, so, you know, just your regular maintenance. But this would probably give you, once it's been installed and fixed, you know, you're probably looking at it lasting, I don't know, you know, 20-plus years without doing anything else to the bridge or fixing anything else. So that's your, kind of your midterm option. Option three, or so I'm, I had it. So these are what we call the bends. You actually see at the bottom of this picture, that's what they did back the last time they fixed the bridge. And I can't remember what year that was.
2013.
2013. So that's when they, they kind of did this. And then the long-term solution is, it's kind of, it's two, you really have two options. One is replace the north and south approaches and actually just make them, you do away with the bends in there. Basically, it's a retaining wall system. That way, you don't have to worry about the steel anymore, and it's less maintenance long-term. But it doesn't also get you, it doesn't replace the bridge itself. So you're still have some, I guess, restrictions within the bridge proper. Talking to the engineers and working with the railroad, if you were to replace the bridge itself, the span, the center span that goes over the railroad, right now, it doesn't meet their height requirements. So it's approximately three feet too low. You would have to raise the bridge, and then by raising the bridge, because of the way that that design is, you probably have to raise it about seven feet because of the supports that you would typically use on a bridge replacement. Doing that, you then have some really steep approaches. So you would have to bring those approaches, both extend them further south and north. And just looking at it right now, you'd probably lose access of going under that on Main Street and Second Street. And you would probably touch down on Third Street somewhere on the south side. So it really starts restricting what you can and can't do. At this point, I'm going to leave it kind of open. Questions, concerns, comments?
Would you go on and talk about the summary that says, their opinion about building a new bridge in the long term? There was something in there that said basically, the replacement that convinced me that, you know, we need to go ahead and pursue a new bridge.
Well, again.
I can find it if you, but basically, they said this is a 100-year-old bridge and it needs to be replaced. And even if we replace it, we're not going to be able to get, or if we repair it, we're not going to get the height that we need.
Correct.
With the ladder trucks.
Right. So the, as you know, right now, there's a restriction that because of the way the design of the bridge, the ladder truck cannot go over it at this point. If you replace a span that goes over the railroad, the railroad is going to enforce their requirements. And you have to raise that structure up, again, as I talked about, three to seven feet, depending on how you end up designing it. And then you have to then extend out your approaches because you have to have site distance and meet all the current standards for bridge and approach construction. That, I'm not sure, you know, again, this is, haven't got all the details. But then you're, again, going to restrict Main Street access of, you know, going, you know, east and west, probably on Second Street also. And your first true east-west connection on Washington Street would be at Third Street. And the cost of doing all that is, is, you know, again, it's, all comes down to money on what you want to do. It can be done, but then you have to decide, is it worth doing it? And then cutting off access at Main Street and Second Street and making some, you know, potentially losing business access and other issues along Washington Street between Third and where the bridge is at. And the same thing is also on the north side. Less of an impact. You'd probably dead-end, you know, the east-west streets with cul-de-sacs, which would work. But again, starts limiting access in the neighborhood. And the cost of doing that probably is close to just finding another north-south street that would be appropriate in your long-term transportation plan and building a new access to go, to connect both north and south across the railroad tracks.
Did they have any idea where they would put a new bridge if we were to do that?
That wasn't part of the study. That would be, you know, that's a bigger decision at this point. It, you know, it really, it depends on what you wanted, you know, the city really wants to do. I think from, at least in the engineering standpoint, to replace this bridge and make it something that's accessible to all equipment and what your needs are, you're really going to start limiting access on your streets that are around that bridge. And it's going to cost you just as much as finding another access point.
So if we were to go with a new bridge, would it be like a four-lane bridge or three-lane or?
I don't know.
What are the recommendations for those that have done the study?
They, they didn't go with that much detail. The, all they said is long-term is you can either replace this bridge, replace the approaches and not touch the bridge itself, and then find a new spot for a bridge. That was, that, there wasn't, that was not part of the study or their request to look at new solutions for crossing the railroad tracks.
Okay. So then my next question is on the option 1B, which is, could be happening within three weeks where the bridge would be able to be used in traffic going both ways one at a time. Do they recommend that? Will they put a PE stamp on that to make sure that it is safe for the bridge to be opening that, that way?
Their problem, they haven't done the structural analysis of the whole bridge. But they are confident that that is a solution, and I would agree with them. Because the traffic is, if you look back at. Oh, there we go. Sorry. I just wanted to show the one that had that center. There we go. This. This, this one here. So in 2013, is that what you, that center support there that you see is what they put in when they repaired, repaired the bridges back then. And that support is probably two to three times the size of the existing, the outside supports. So when you then move traffic over to just one side of the bridge, it's carrying half that load. And there's not as much deterioration on the east bends. So I'm not going to say that they're going to stamp it. We could get them to that point if you wanted to. It's just additional engineering that would be required.
The three weeks is 1A, isn't it?
1B.
1A is, I think, two weeks is what I said.
Two weeks.
So the big difference is the life between.
Well, I thought it was three weeks, and then depending upon getting some more equipment. I didn't think B would be quite that fast. Anyway.
The reason why I'm looking personally at 1B and B in three weeks is that we're under light there, and the traffic can come east or west on that one lane rather than 1A, which says it's only going to be one-way traffic, no matter what. I think that it would be better that we would be allowed to go both ways over the bridge.
But 1B is after we get the equipment. So we don't know the turnaround time of the equipment, the life. That's three weeks after the equipment. I would move, let's start with 1A, order the equipment, and when the equipment arrives, then install it.
Put the slide back up that says 1A and 1B, would you?
I gotta think of the right direction. There's 1A.
Wasn't there a summary of 1A? Okay, then 1A is.
Yep. So it's just, again, depend, you know, getting the signs, getting the barriers, and then installing them.
Now do 1B.
1B would, again.
Okay, see the last sentence on 1B? Unknown is lead time for procurement of signal. And so that's, I think, or our councilman's marshal's concern too.
I say move with 1A and then do 1B.
Yeah. I mean, I spent $5,000 to get it open one way, and then do 1B also. But, I mean, unless Chris does some calls and says, no, we can get it procured in another very short period of time.
Yeah. I would have to make calls to see if we can do that.
I know, I understand. But I'd say, I would support 1A and 1B and get 1B as quick as we can.
But you're only out just the one-way signs at that point because the barriers still have to be there. And it's just the one-way signs. You have to remove those and just have another sign that's, you know, wait for a signal.
We could probably, we, we got our own sign shop. Can we do this on our own shop? So we could even take the material down and, I, I, part of that $5,000 might go towards this $30,000.
But $5,000, oh, man. But $5,000 for that barrier.
Right.
I'm sure it's mostly for that barrier.
Yeah.
And anyway, so. Yeah, and you're going to have to do it anyway.
We've got the barriers, right. Are we going to use barriers we have?
Pardon me?
The concrete barriers, don't we already have?
We do not have any.
Don't have the ones we need? Okay. You've got some, but not, or not the right sizes. Okay. I'm with you, Chris.
So if we were to go with option 1A to immediately safely open the bridge, and then we are waiting on the signal, once the signal is available, install it, and then that way we can have two ways on one lane?
That is correct. Yes.
And the total cost, what would you be looking at? I mean, not that it really matters because we want the bridge open, so.
Again, we're estimating it would be under 50,000. And again, somewhere between, again, not knowing the procurement time, but once we do have the signal, we would have it, be able to have it done in three weeks. Short-term one, less than two weeks.
Okay.
And then, would you slide to the last? I think it's the last slide, please, sir. The one that had the summaries of the options. Yeah, the recommendations. So to me, the. No, is there another one? There was one more, wasn't there? Is there one more?
Yeah, the do-nothing option. Do-nothing.
Well, we're not going to look at that.
It's, I have to put it out there.
I understand.
No, there was another slide? Anyway, no. For me, okay. So to me, with the, with regard to fixing the bridge.
And we need to start looking at.
There was another slide that, that, maybe it was one before this. But I, I think that, you know, in the long run, we, if, if we repair the current, the approaches ruin the option of, the long-term option for me with regard to the Washington Street Bridge. It's just not practical to go up to Second Street with an approach and that type of thing. So I, I was going to say that I believe in the long run, we at least need to start the process of looking into partnering with the railroad and with the county, you know, our ability to begin the process for a new structure, new spring.
And matter of fact, can get over it.
Yeah. And this is going to be, and it's going to be, I think, and I, again, I know it hasn't been designed, but I would guess it's like the new, you know, the Missouri, the I-70 bridge over the Missouri River going to Columbia is now an open concrete structure. There is no structure above. And I, and, and this, the bridge we had in Washington Street by duck is, well, we say nearly 100 years old. So new technology would let us have an open, probably let us have an open road deck. And, and I think there's someplace between, I would think somewhere near Hancock is the place between the existing bridge and East Engineer where we could get that. That's complete speculation on my part. But I'm pretty comfortable that we could, we need to start the process of a new structure and get the existing one open as quick as we can.
Yep.
I would, and again, it's your decision. I would then, if that's where the council and the city wants to go, I would still, then you've got to make that decision. Are you going to keep Washington Street Bridge one-way, one lane with two-way traffic? Or are you going to encase the bends so that it has a longer lifespan? It's still not, it's still going to have restrictions on it. But if you don't do that, you will have, you're still in a temporary stage.
To me, I don't think, I would rather proceed with what I just talked about within, I mean, yes, we're going to encase the bends if it's going to be 10 years. Well, we need to start that process of trying to get an idea about how long it's going to take to get this new bridge. And then, we don't have to make that decision today. We could make that decision in December or May next year, somewhere in a reasonable amount of time when we know if the railroad will facilitate. We may have to abandon that if we can't get mode out and everything.
Understood.
Right? But I don't think that's, I don't have enough information today to make that decision. But I've got enough today to say, get it opened, and let's start the process of the new bridge too.
So, so can I get a motion to how to proceed right now as to be able to use the Washington Street Bridge now within the next three weeks?
I believe that motion would be, I would make a motion to utilize option 1B because that includes option 1, to be able to create the barriers, to create.
Proceed with 1A and 1B.
It'd be A and B.
If that's your, I would second it.
And then we can start the process of the long-term approach to it.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to go. So we have a motion on the floor to go with options 1A and option 1B?
I'll second.
All in favor? So we need to do a roll call on that?
You can if you want to.
Let's go ahead and do a roll call on that, please.
Robinson is absent. Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
So you have seven yes and one no.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anything else?
Anything else?
Anything else we could pursue later?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion has been made and second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.